My name is Jessica Jameson. I live on West Shore Road in Warwick. I am unable to drive and I depend on the Route 29 bus in order to commute to my job at the Warwick Mall. The security of my employment depends on my availability to work on weekends. And if all weekend service on this route is suspended, it is very likely that I will lose my job. I also depend on the Route 4 to get me into Providence. And the gutting of this route will significantly impact my ability to get to my second job, as well as my connection to the larger community in Providence. I take both of these routes nearly every day. I am very, very rarely the only person on the bus, even at six o'clock in the morning or nine o'clock at night. These cuts will significantly impact many people within the community, including the potential for people such as myself to lose their only method of commute, and by extension, possibly their employment. I strongly urge you to reconsider the proposed changes. Thank you.
Yes, hello. Before I start, could I ask you guys to bring in those four maps that you had in here earlier to show the routes that you currently have or are cutting? I would like a visual on this, please, because you guys had, yeah, you guys had four maps. And I would like to point out something on those maps.
Kevin, where are you from?
I am from Warwick, Rhode Island. And much like Jessica, I take the West Shore Road bus. I think it would be a disservice and disgenuine to cut the weekend and holiday routes. There, I live in an Section 8 apartment. There are many disabled and, well, personally, I have autism and ADHD, and elderly there. And you'd be cutting their routes, too. I also want to point out, too, to call yourself Ripta would be a farce, because you do not represent all of Rhode Island. You only represent metro Providence, Warwick, maybe some of one socket, and you barely represent Westerly. Westerly is left all alone to Connecticut. And this has been the way it's been always. It takes two hours for somebody to get from Providence to Westerly. That's a farce. That's ridiculous. So to call yourself Ripta and represent the Rhode Island people is a farce. It's false advertisement, personally, in my opinion. And now you're cutting routes to Cumberland, and you're already cutting routes to Boroughville, Chapachet, North Citu, and all that. There's already no routes in Coventry. So, I mean, there's no routes in Little Compton, no routes in Tibbetts. I mean, so it's disingenuous, I think, to say that. Also, cutting all of these routes, you see all these people here. This is not a hornet's nest. You're going to be walking into a hornet's nest after this. You've got to walk into West Warwick, Providence, one socket, you know? This is not the hornet's nest. These people are calm, you know? I'm calm myself, and I'm just preparing you for the hornet's nest, you know? So, to be honest, like I said, these maps say it all. It's disingenuous to call you guys, say that you guys represent all of Rhode Island, because you don't. And it's been that way for a while. And I believe that there's got to be a way to represent all of Rhode Island and compromise and not cut all these routes. I know people, I know I got short on time. I know people from the 59X, they work at the State House. They go from the State House, they go from the State House to Kennedy Plaza, all the way up to Lincoln and all that. You cut that route, you cut their service. So, I mean, it doesn't just affect the people on Section 8, it affects everyone, you know? So, I'm not directing this at any one particular person. I'm not directing this at you or you or anyone. I'm just saying that, you know, I feel this, and it hurts the drivers, too. It hurts everybody. So, I guess I'll close with, you know, living in the 29 route, we're already limited. Well, we were. But now I can't see my, now I can't take the bus up to Cumberland to see my family, you know? And I can't, you know, I live, what, two miles away from my mom in the other end of West Shore Road. I won't be able to do that on weekends and holidays. You cut that route. So, you know, thank you for hearing me out. And I apologize for calling you guys out, but I'm calling it like I see it. You know, that map right there says it, you know, and it's a little bit embarrassing that you guys only cover that little swath and call yourself the Rhode Island Public Transit Authority when it doesn't cover all of Rhode Island. So, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amanda Eisenstark. I live in Providence, and I take the 66 every day down to URI, except on weekends. And today, my vacation day. So I've taken a vacation day to advocate for other 66 and 69 riders who can't be here today. Just for the record, I also take the 57, 55, 92, 1, and R line, among others. I've been taking the 66 to URI for 25 years. While I can afford a car, I use Ripta because I care about the environment and because I can safely multitask on my commute to campus. Many of my fellow riders don't have that choice, however, and Ripta is their only way to work and to school. Cuts to the 66 will make it harder for students at CCRI and URI to get to their classes efficiently. It will make it harder or impossible for commuters to get to their jobs, like the woman who takes the 66 to Kingston to work at the Emporium, or the woman who stays on the 66 as it turns into the 69 to get to her job further south. These are just a couple of examples, and there are undoubtedly more, because there's people on this bus every single day. I know there are difficult decisions to be made. I urge the Ripta administration to consider the effects cuts in service and elimination of routes will have on the many riders who can't be here today. Thank you very much.
I will read a few comments regarding specific routes, and then I have some general comments. I ride, I calculated, I ride probably 13 of the routes during the course of a year, many of them several times a week. And I live in a building in East Greenwich that has 110 apartments with more than 110 people, a number of which, or a number of whom, use Ripta and need to go on Ripta. We take the 16, which goes up Bald Hill Road, and also goes down to Gate Road, which provides us the only opportunity to regularly shop at grocery stores or any other store, okay? We also take the 14 to go either to Newport or to Providence. The way that this, your proposals have suggested or requested that the 14 service be eliminated on weekends, and that 16 be, the service on 16 on Sundays be eliminated. This will create an impossible situation for people in Wickford, in North Kingstown, East Greenwich, Appinogue, and I assume that you, that you and the politicians who support these cuts, you know, and I don't mean to be talking to any of you personally, but it suggests that you don't care about these residents. I don't really go often beyond North Kingstown, so I don't know how this, the cutting of the 14 affects people, you know, further down toward Newport. I also notice, I take the 13 sometimes to West Warwick, and you're cutting service off completely for those people. So I can, again, assume that somebody doesn't care about them either, including the politicians who support some of these cuts. Now, I have a couple of suggestions. I want to say also that I noticed the R-line service is going to be cut. I personally have seen, from Kennedy Plaza, quite often, two R-line buses back-to-back, the second one with nobody in them. I've seen occasionally three buses. Something needs to be done, and I've thought for years that somebody with real transportation management experience needs to evaluate the routes and the way that you, the frequency, et cetera. A couple of years ago, a number of stops were reduced, and people like me, who are 79 years old, often have to walk half a mile between bus stops. And that's true. I'm in pretty good shape considering, so I don't have a problem doing it. But there are a lot of people who don't, who aren't in good shape. There are a lot of people on, you know, in wheelchairs, et cetera. Now, I would also say that there are a lot of qualified people and some wonderful people that I've met at Ripta, both in management and in, you know, in the office, people who deal with customers. And most of the drivers are good, but there are, for example, some drivers who are five, six, even seven or eight minutes early, earlier than scheduled. And the excuse sometimes when I call in to complain about that is, well, you're supposed to be at the bus stop five minutes early. And I usually get there that early. But as I say, I've seen them go by, you know, when I'm a quarter of a mile down the road, six, seven, eight minutes early, which is unacceptable, particularly in the case of a bus like the 16. And again, many of the drivers are great, but a, just as an example, a bus that starts at Gate Road, or sometimes buses that start from Kennedy Plaza that shouldn't be leaving early, because that's a starting point, okay? People rely on it. And also, and again, as to the scheduling, there are a number of buses that go, for example, to CCRI, which is obviously a central point for, you know, half a dozen buses, that the way that they're scheduled, assuming the bus is on time, you know, the 14 might get there two minutes, is scheduled to get there two minutes earlier than the other buses leave. But, you know, buses don't, you know, particularly if a bus driver is anxious to, you know, to go, they miss the connection as well. The other thing I'd like to say is that, or two things, actually. One is that, I'll be 30, I'll be 30 seconds, okay? That too often, Ripta has been used as sort of a reward, a place of reward, you know, for politicians or loyal, you know, and many of the people who are appointed are qualified. But it is urgent, important that Ripta does look out for qualified, experienced transportation management people, and that you revise your, the entire schedule completely. I think that there's a lot that can be done and that should be done. I have one more suggestion. I don't know how many of the wave passes you sell per year, but they're $10. And I think most people could afford to do that for $20, if, you know, to raise some additional money. And I think that you, it's important also for particularly upper management to be required to ride at least some of the buses twice a year, every six months once, just so they get experience. I know a lot of them have probably never been on the bus, or at least not for years. And I think it would be important for them to understand what's going on. I talk to a lot of people, and a lot of people, they may not be here, they may not be vocal, but they feel the same way. And Ripta, we're a small state. We should be able to get it together and do a lot, a lot better.
My name is Diane LeBrandy, and I grew up on buses. I'm 75 years old. I'm a veteran's widow. And I grew up in Cranston, two streets over from Providence, where the shipyard used to be, now it's Johnson and Wales Campus. And they had buses everywhere. I remember not too long ago, they had buses down to the beach. You could go down to, you had a Narragansett bus that went down to Narragansett Town Beach. But then you had buses from all different parts of the state that would go down to Sand Hill Cove, would go down, I'm using the old names, Salty Brian's Beach, Galilee, whatever you want to call it, and they would go to Scarborough. And you cannot even take a bus to go down to the beach. If I had to take one, I'd probably have to take the URI bus and then take another one to go down to Georges and Galilee, and that's going to be eliminated possibly. Okay, that's my background. But I do live in Providence. I do use my wave pass all the time. Up until a year ago, I had a car, I was driving, and with a car, you're very independent, you can go anywhere. You can't go anywhere with the buses. As this other guy said, you can't go down to Westerly. I used to go down to Watch Hill, you know? I used to go down to the beaches. You can't go down to the beaches. But anyways, right now, I take the regular bus. I depend on Ripta and the buses to get around. I use, even though I have to walk 500 steps with my walker to my bus stop, and that's a Pontiac Number 22 bus, which I understand is going to be cut back. Basically, I depend on the buses to get to church. I depend on the buses that do my grocery shopping. I go to the Market Basket in Johnston, which I hope they haven't cut out. I don't think they have. And I also use, that's, so I use quite a few buses. I use the 28 bus to go to Johnston. I use buses 3, 60, 51, 54, 21. I use it for my recreation, to go to restaurants. And then I, and also my bank, because I cannot get to my bank walking anymore. There's no way that I have a bank close enough to me, or my bank close enough to me. So I depend on it all the time. I use the ride vehicles as a backup, and I was using it more frequently right after I had my dislocated ankle, unfortunately. So I was using it basically all the time. I do use it now occasionally when I have a heavy load of groceries, or I can't get to a spot in the state anywhere else but with the ride. I do have to say that recently I used it down to the Veterans Cemetery, because I had to pick up some important papers. And I was able to, you know, make up the trip, going and coming back. And I was very, very happy with it, I have to say that. But basically, that's not going to help anyone here, because mostly everybody here uses the regular buses. And I really think that everybody in this room, especially the employees, the CEO, I didn't get quite your name, and you, which you are an executive, too. I would hope that you would reconsider, and instead of cutting back on the buses, maybe merge some of them together. You know, make, you know, maybe two or three lines into one, and then alternate, like you do with the Newport bus. You alternate it with, between, okay, West Main Road and East Main Road. That's the end of my conversation. And I got it all written down, if you wanted a paper, too. Thank you.
As I'm bilingual, and we have a Spanish station here, my translation will be speaking in English and in Spanish. English first, then Spanish. As many of you know, I'm with the Ripta riders and Ripta ATAC. This is nothing against you, because I know Ed and everyone here works very hard. The decisions were made by higher up than you guys. We understand that. So I first, after all, say, all Ripta, all Ripta board members have to ride the bus. It's gotten to the point that our roads are run by the head of the Department of Transportation, which is a board member of this, of this lovely agency. Second of all, I come as first, myself, and as a caregiver to my mother. So this is both affecting me, partly because I've known how the system worked and how the decisions came to be. And it's going back to when we first did cuts before. It's more extreme now than it was before. But it, but as I ride both, now I ride the 72 and the 73. I'm completely eliminated to go to the bank on the 73. I think about the 73 for the kids in Central Falls that go to CCRI and Lincoln, because CCRI is a main point in the state. So if they're all pushing them here to Warwick, it's even harder, because many people do not want to leave their one-mile space of where they live. Because as a Hispanic person, we have more responsibilities to our families than to the outside world. This is why today, I came today. I wasn't going to come today, because this brings up a lot of anxiety to me, and I'm trying to control my anxiety for both myself and my mother. But this is very important, because she, my mother is just recovering from a recent bout of serious health concerns that she had, that she relies on the bus for longer distances. She can do anything in her close mile or down the street, but anything farther than that, like a doctor's appointment at the diabetes clinic, she has to take the one for that. So with the cuts being proposed, which I know these cuts are very difficult to explain, but we know it's all because of the budget, the budget deficit that our lovely state has handed the agency. The other thing is the 75. As, as sometimes my mother cannot do longer distances, I am willing to do those longer distances in my wheelchair. So with the 75 being eliminated, that is, that is one point of attraction or money into the state that is lost. Because if all these, all these cuts go into effect, like I said many times before, my money is going to Massachusetts and to the MBTA, because they have, they have a better system for a person with a disability than a person here.
Three minutes is up there.
And now I will allow my English three minutes and say it in Spanish, because we have a Spanish-speaking station here. Mi nombre es Devin Giralez. Yo hablo por una parte de la comunidad hispana. Yo vengo hoy por mi madre y por yo mismo, porque yo cuido de ella muy bien. Ella puede caminar poquitas distancias, pero no muchas. So cuando ella toma el bus, es para una cita que uno no puede pagar un Uber, porque los dos estamos viviendo con plata del gobierno. Segundo, con el 63 y el 65 eliminan cómo podemos salir de nuestras casas. So en ese momento, Rhode Island se convierte en un Rhode Island de una isla, y todos estos cambios van en efecto en septiembre. Que yo sí sé qué va a pasar, y ya preparé mi madre y me preparo yo. Mi plata va para Massachusetts. Thank you very much for hearing, for hearing my comments today. Muchas gracias por escuchar mis, mis consejos.
My name is Zach Freydis. I live in West Warwick. The 23 is cut. I've got to walk two miles to get to the 13. If I miss that, I'm screwed to get to work or anywhere else I need to go in the state. And then 21, 22, and 30, I use to get to work, right up the street. I'm actually supposed to be at work right now, that stop and chop. I'll read my time for anyone else.
Good afternoon. My name is Lynn Radesius. I live in Warwick, but I do not use the bus. I am the sister of an elderly, disabled man who lives in West Warwick and who relies on the bus for transportation. Here we are, one year later, forced again to plead for services that Ripta is obligated to provide, though grateful for the adjustments made last year to preserve the necessary routes and services that will have been in vain if the ball gets dropped now. Ripta must not deny human beings in Rhode Island the access to transportation that they desperately need to get to work, to get to medical appointments, to get to the market, and quite frankly, to get anywhere that they just need or want to. We take for granted our ability to jump in our own cars and go anywhere we want at any time. Imagine relying on a bus every day and being told, "Your route is getting cut." Life for most people who rely on the bus is exhausting enough already. People, most people rely on the bus out of necessity, and Ripta has an obligation to provide transportation to the people who need it. Please find a way to do this. If an emergency fund or a rainy day fund needs to be accessed, well, it's an emergency and a downpour. There are grants. The Rhode Island Foundation might be able to help. Spend the millions you have now more conservatively, which it sounds like you are already making great progress in doing. Find the incentive to fix this. Please don't just throw up your hands and declare, "Your route is cut. Your route is cut. Your route is cut." This is not a business. You are not producing and selling widgets, where not enough people are buying widgets, so you will make fewer of them. You are obligated to provide public transportation to all of Rhode Island. That there are fewer people than you would like using the bus is unfortunate, but the people that need to take the bus need to take the bus. You might consider using smaller buses for certain routes that carry fewer riders. Please don't underestimate the savings in doing that. Following the bridge collapse, plans were made to spend $50,000 to $67,000 per day to ferry people from Bristol to Providence for free at a cost of $5 million for three months. The money's there. It's, unfortunately, your job to find it. You cannot just pull the rug from under the elderly, the disabled, and the poor. You have no idea how these cuts will impact lives. It will not impact your life, but it will impact the lives of those for whom you are responsible to provide transportation. I know you take no pleasure in this, and I respect you for being here and thank you for the time to address you. These cuts are unacceptable. Please stay at it and do better.
Afternoon. My name is Ron Trotta. I live in Warwick. And once again, I'd like to applaud the previous speaker. I'm a, I almost died during COVID. I had a couple of strokes, neuropathy. I can, I can, I own a car. It's not wise for me to drive, so I don't. I'm a volunteer. I volunteer at the airport. In fact, I volunteer at TF Green. I'm the fellow that plays the piano at the baggage claim five nights a week. You may have seen me there. But I'd ride, and I wouldn't be here today, but I, you know what? Public transportation is what gives me my independence. But other people, this is their life, this is their livelihood, this is their survival. They cannot exist without public transportation. It's the role of government to provide sanitation, pick up the garbage, and provide transportation so people can support the politicians that waste their money and spend it on things that are not important. So I'm teary to say today that this is devastating to all these people, and it's everybody's job. It's not just your job, it's our job, too, to talk to our politicians and say, "If you want to, if you want to have our vote, then do what's important. Take care of conservation, take care of the environment." And you know, by cutting all this and making all these people figure out ways to drive, it's going to be more expensive than the money that you save by cutting all these rides. It's a, it's a financially stupid solution. It makes more sense to increase the buses, increase public transportation, and put more taxes on the cars, like they do in New York City. It works great. This is ridiculous to have these cuts done to this system, because the role of government is to take civilization and make it move forward, make it grow, and this is not doing that. This is making people who are suffering, people who work hard, it's making them hurt even more. And the more people hurt, the happier the government seems to get. Now, why is that? If the politicians really had mass transit, conservation, the environment as a priority, they would find the money. But they don't have this as a priority, and we need politicians that do that. And I'm not a political guy. I vote and I pay my taxes, and that's it. And I play the piano. And so, please, everybody... And so, please, everybody, scream about this. This is ridiculous. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Randall Rose. I'm from Providence. I'm a member of the Kennedy Plaza Resilience Coalition. It's good to see so many people out here. We all know these cuts are completely unacceptable. I mean, these cuts would affect a lot of the routes that I rely on. And, you know, we all wish that there was some way that Ripta could just shift things around and find a way to avoid these cuts, but they've been given so little money from the politicians that, they've been given so little money from the politicians that no matter how they try to shift things around, there's no way to avoid very serious cuts. So I know a lot of people want to complain to Ripta, say, tell Ripta they're wrong for doing these cuts, but Ripta does not want to do these cuts. They just have to work with the money they're given by the state government. So as long as we just speak in this room and we're only heard by Ripta, we're not going to be able to solve this problem. We have to go talk to the politicians. They're the ones who make the decisions. And a lot of the people in the General Assembly have heard from their voters that buses are important. We do have a lot of supporters among the ordinary state reps and state senators, but really, these decisions are made by the top level of the state government. It's the governor, the House Speaker, the Senate President. They do mostly deciding about how much money goes to Ripta, and this year, they decided not to give Ripta enough. So what I'm going to ask people to do, and what our organization and other bus rider organizations are trying to do, is you have to actually contact your politicians. I know it's not pleasant, but that's the only way this message is going to be heard. If they had just given ten million dollars more to Ripta, we would not be facing these cuts. So the people at the top level of the State House, what they like to do is even if they know people need something, they'll experiment with cutting it to see if they get a backlash. If they don't get a backlash after they cut funds, then they figure, okay, we can cut it. If they're, if too many voters complain, then they give the money back. They restore the money, and that's what we need right now. So I know it's hard. I know people are reluctant to do it, but we really need to contact our politicians. I've been passing out flyers with the politicians' phone numbers that you can call, office phone numbers. You can just call their office and leave a message. If thousands of bus riders do that, we can get these cuts reversed, and we can get even expanded bus service for Ripta. But it is, it does depend on us, and, you know, there's a chance to get this reversed now. It may get reversed around the beginning of next year, but we do need to be continuing, continually calling politicians and asking our fellow bus riders and friends to do the same. So if you can do that, please do. I also encourage people to join bus rider groups. There are three bus rider groups in Rhode Island. The Kennedy Plaza Resilience Coalition that I'm part of, Rhode Island Transit Riders, which is the oldest and most general bus rider group, and Save Ripta. They're all good groups. It's good to join all of them. So that's, I've been passing around a sign-up sheet for the Kennedy Plaza Resilience Coalition, but the other groups are good too. So please get, I definitely do. I will be passing it around. Thank you very much. Yep, thank you.
How are you doing today? My name is Miles Brown-Husband. I live in Warwick, and I'm representing the ATAC and the Providence Street Coalition, Save Ripta. Now, first, I would like to say that all these cuts are deplorable. I feel like you're messing with people's lives. I know people that can't get to work because they can't take the bus with all these cuts. Like my good man said before me, it's deplorable, but yet it's due to our politicians. I've been fighting tirelessly at the State House to try to get this done, but obviously it wasn't good enough. So I have to tell all you fine people to do that same thing. Call your representatives and try to get this stopped. Get it back to the way it is, you know? If Flex is cut, then, and then the way of life of, you know, the people that I know and people getting to work will be greatly affected. The people that don't have cars, a way of transportation other than the bus. I come from, you know, I come from Massachusetts where the transit system is much better. I'm not trying to say that you're not doing your jobs because I know that you are. Like I said, it's due to the politicians. So fight, fight, fight for all of our rights. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Chanel Wheeler. I'm from Providence, and I'm here today because I, my husband and I do not have a car, and we rely on Ripta every single day. Really grateful for Ripta. Every day I wake up and I just think, "Thank you, Ripta," for taking me where I need to go and looking, you know, every day, whether it's going to work or seeing friends or family, knowing what the address is. I have, it's a daily ritual of plugging in Google Maps and seeing, you know, where is that, where's that route? Where's it going to be? Is it possible for me to get there on time? Is it possible for me to get there at all? And if it's not, can I afford the Uber? And usually the answer is no. So really, when you're looking at these budget cuts that just make me feel sick to my stomach and maybe others in the room do too, and maybe for you as well, it just really feels like a punch in the gut and also as if the maps of people's lives are being erased and being altered or being faded. And I know that the thirty hours of different frequency change for different routes like matters for someone. It's the difference of getting there or not. Eliminating a route of the ninety-five X means I won't see a friend in Westerly probably, probably at all anymore. And the ninety-one change, proposed change means, will I be able to get to the other side near where I used to work in Providence Public Schools to go from where I live to get to Federal Hill area near Onlyville? Like, that ninety-one proposed change to me leaves me wondering, am I going to easily be able to get home at night? I'm not sure. And I think I use more than twenty routes every single month. I'm all over the state all the time for the work I do in education, and I know that for myself, for my family, for my friends who don't have a car, for my former students who I see on the bus every day, these, these changes are the differences in what they are doing daily for work, for their lives. And it just makes me, it really makes me feel unsettled and nauseous to think that this is, that this is happening. So I just, yeah, I really want us to do everything we can to fight this, and I trust that you also want that too. So thank you for listening to us, and we've, we've got to fight to make the maps of everyone's lives not faded and not erased, but instead expanded. Thank you.
I'm Peter Becker from Warwick, Rhode Island. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We heard a great deal about the pain today, a rather tedious recital of all the route changes and so on and so forth, but almost nothing about the intended gain, the estimated savings. What will happen as a result of these changes? What new expenses will be avoided? And will we come close to reducing the deficit and operation of Ripta sufficiently to make all these painful changes worthwhile? It also seems as if we were flying in a crop duster, very, very close to the ground. And I echo the sentiment of one of the previous speakers that a broader approach from a higher level might be taken in which we look at much more imaginatively other kinds of changes that might accomplish the requisite budget reconciliation. For example, combination of bus routes, transferring over to a smaller bus transportation system when that's appropriate for the passenger load. What is the cost of operating the very large buses that Ripta now operates versus a smaller twelve or twenty passenger bus? Would there be a value in switching to a hybrid private-public system? Something like a rideshare system in which people call in the place that they want to get to and where they're leaving from? Can this be made to work in a way that gets people where they need to be in a timely fashion? I also echo a previous speaker's comment that we should be looking at a way of increasing the service. Part of the reason that Ripta isn't used is that it's so inconvenient. If you want to get downtown on the weekend, how do you get back at a reasonable hour? Just say ten o'clock at night? It's not possible. We would like to use the public buses more, all of us, I think, in this room, whether we were obligated to before lack of alternate transportation or because we feel compelled to do that for the savings and its impact on the environment. But we're not presented with very broad array of choices here. We're not seeing that an effort has been put in to actually look at this in an imaginative fashion, and that's kind of shameful, I think. And then finally, to return to the weeds. When we're talking about combining the bus routes, three and four share a good deal of their route in common. Four is going to be shut down completely on the weekend. Three will operate on, I think it was Saturday, maybe Sunday. Why not do alternate? One of them operates on Saturday, one operates on Sunday, if you, instead of closing it down completely on the weekend. Why not offer that kind of choice? Why not combine three and four if that makes sense? There is way too much information given in the presentation about the proposed changes. That can be done effectively with a handout and so forth. I think you need to open this up to a much, much broader discussion of how these changes will actually serve the public and also cause less pain in the process. Thank you.
My name is Jeanne Anne Giuliano. I live in East Greenwich. I'm here as an advocate for my son, and I have been an advocate for Rhode Islanders with disabilities for about twenty-five years. For my son James, his health and well-being depends on the health and well-being of Ripta because he does not drive. He takes Ripta to work, takes Ripta everywhere he needs to go, and he will for the rest of his life. So it's very important to me that Ripta remains healthy. First, a word of thanks, then my concerns, and then maybe some recommendations. First, obviously, Ripta and the planning department took a lot of time and effort, obviously, in making these changes. Thanks to the General Assembly for the additional funding, even though it wasn't what we needed. Thanks specifically for the CCRI hub. I think that that's kind of a stroke of genius for getting people to the one area and then being able to go to other areas from there. Thank you for preserving Route sixteen. I think someone else had mentioned that too. That's very important for North Kingstown riders, Warwick riders, East Greenwich riders, so thank you for preserving that. I know that that was not a highly ridership, but it is a new route, and I think I have some ideas on how we can increase ridership on that. My concern, obviously, as other people have mentioned, is the impact on people with disabilities, seniors, working people who can't afford to drive a car. As I'm preaching to the choir, but public transit is not a for-profit entity. It is a public service. And, you know, I hope the powers that be realize that it should be funded just like everything else. Fire police, education, roads, and hopefully they will realize that in the future. With regard specifically to Kent County and some of the changes that have been proposed, the elimination of Route twenty-three impacting West Warwick and Coventry in Warwick, this, this brings Coventry specifically down to just one bus with no weekend service. So within Kent County, Coventry has really hit hard. West Warwick has really hit hard. They went from three buses to only one bus with no weekend service. West Greenwich now has zero service. Exeter now has zero service. Warwick, you know, too many to mention, but multiple impact on Warwick. East Greenwich and North Kingstown, no weekend service with the exception of sixty-six. I'm trying to speed up because I know I'm going to run out of time, but also, we're looking at South County. With the elimination of sixty-nine and fourteen, there's, I don't even know how to get to Narragansett now, or how Narragansett people can come up here. There's no weekend service at all now in Narragansett. And with the elimination of twelve X and sixty-five X, we need Route sixty-six at full frequency to make up for the loss of those routes. I'm sorry, I know I ran out of time, but again, I realize, I know that Ripta has worked really hard with this because you were left with not enough funding. And I know that there were three reps in Kent County and South County who voted for the additional funding, three, I'm sorry, three state senators who voted for the additional funding that, that were proposed by Senator Sam Zier, and that was Bridgette Valverde, Alana Damari, and Victoria Gu. The other senators from West Warwick and Coventry and Warwick and even Narragansett did not vote for that additional funding. I have a list if anybody is interested, but we need, as many of you have said, we need to contact those senators and ask them why, and ask them to vote for the funding in the future. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark John Souza, and I live in Warwick. And I would like to see no cuts on Route one, twenty-nine, or thirteen, or the Route three where my friend Joey lives. And don't worry, be happy. Thank you.
I've lived in West Warwick since two thousand and three. I have taken the old twenty-nine where it used to run down Coeset Avenue, and the bus only ran till six forty-five, and there was no buses on Sundays or holidays. I've moved to West Warwick on Providence Street where I live at West Coast Terrace, where a lot of people take the bus. I also require the bus on Saturdays because I work at Marshalls, and I cannot get to work if they cut the thirteen and the twenty-three on the Saturdays. There's no, so many people rely on the buses in West Warwick. There's no other buses around. And if you call Flex, they only bring you to Cumberland Farms, and then you have to walk the rest of the way. It's not ideal for a lot of people to just, you know, expect that there's no weekend service. How do people get around? You know, a lot of people can't afford, you know, Uber or Lyft, and a lot of people don't have a lot of friends and family to help them out, to bring them places. They end up having to require people that live who have a car. A lot of people don't have cars. It's way too expensive. And, you know, if I can't get to work, I can't, I don't have a job. They already told me this. And, you know, it's ridiculous because we come up with the same thing every year. You know, I missed the meetings last year. They were going to cut all weekend service last year. The same thing happens this year. I mean, I get that we have to talk to politicians and everything, but they're obviously not listening to anybody because they keep coming up with the same problem. But like other people have said, it's not, you know, serving anybody if they keep cutting all these lines and cutting, you know, dropping the services from forty minutes to fifty minutes. Some people can't even get to CCRI, and then they leave early, and then you can't get the bus because they leave early, and then you can't get to work. You know, it's just, it's frustrating for people who are on disability. You know, there's a lot of people that are disabled, you know, that take the bus and they can't get around. Thank you.
My name's Daniel, and I live in Tiverton. I used to attend the University of Rhode Island, but due to money issues, I'm going back to CCRI. I commute about four to five hours a day, round trip on four Ripta buses, depending on the day and time where I have to go, twenty-four L, sixty-six, sixty, sixty-four, fourteen, sixty-nine. I'm here today to actually offer a potential solution to some of the budgetary crisis that Ripta is dealing with. Right here in my wallet, I'm holding a wave card, which is subsidized to thirty-five dollars a month for students, seventy dollars regular. But with this program, we have ten colleges and universities in the state of Rhode Island that are part of this program. With CCRI, every student gets billed one dollar per a fee, a commuter fee every semester. One dollar per credit, maximum twelve dollars. If CCRI and the other colleges, the Board of Trustees could work together with Ripta, they can find emergency funding where this is going to be a crisis, which this is going to affect students. Students, financial aid, FAFSA, the Rhode Island Promise Program, it pays for students for these fees where they're able to attend like CCRI for free. This is a huge crisis. This would be an opportunity, kind of like a last-minute thing if we can't get This would be an opportunity, kind of like a last-minute thing if we can't get the politicians to approve this, to get additional hundreds of thousands, if not potentially up to a few million dollars that could really knock off this deficit. Hearing the testimony of Ripta riders today has really seen this. Like right here, even if you raise it $5, right here, could pay for a coffee at Dunkin' or Starbucks per student, could raise a significant amount of money. When I looked at this system, it showed with the 10 universities, Brown, Johnson, RISD, Providence College, Salvi Regina, Bryan, Roger Williams, Rhode Island College, URI, and C.C.R.I., we're looking at potentially over 61,000 customers that are students. With the Wave customers, you take out the colleges that have the students swipe their ID card, and they actually have to buy the card, over 47,000 students. If there's a way where everyone, they could work with the Board of Directors at these colleges to see if there's a minor adjustment that could be made on these transportation fees and have it spread out, this could potentially really help save that. And even though college is expensive, what's an extra $5 at this point for a college student, where a textbook is $300 to $400? Even though I can't afford a car, I'm willing to pay that price as a college student. And to even make a first step on this, I'm actually going to be personally contacting C.C.R.I.'s president's office at some point after this meeting today to initiate this conversation, because I really firmly believe this could potentially go somewhere. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for taking the time to do this today. My name's Joe Tallman. I come from North Kingstown. I've lived in Rhode Island for the better part of my 40 years. I'm one of the few that use the Ripta for amenity. I've always had a car, but I just like to use it. It's easy, it's convenient for the most part. But I also sit here and look at some of our most vulnerable citizens, and this is who you're going to hurt, not me. My thing is this, is the two biggest complaints about Ripta, and I, like I said, 40 years, it's always been safety and convenience is everyone's biggest challenge with Ripta. I'm just going to say this, it's a rhetorical question. Now, you're treating these people like customers, even though this is a state service and they're residents. But my thing is, if you're going to take convenience away from, I'm just going to call them customers, if you're going to take convenience away from the customers who already think it's going to be inconvenient, do you think you're going to lose or gain more customers? You're going to lose customers, because these people already are looking at it as inconvenient. If it's more inconvenient, they're definitely not going to use it. So how are you going to raise revenue while still losing customers, is my only question? Thank you for your time today.
Hello, everyone. I just want to introduce myself. I'm the president, business agent of local 618, 618A, the Amalgamated Transit Union, which represent roughly 800 members at Ripta. We have hard-working men and women that get you to where you need to be every day. I'm here on behalf of the union and our members about these service cuts. These service cuts are not only devastating to our members and their families, but the community. What this does to the community is beyond comprehension. I've never seen this in my almost 28 years in Ripta. We've always had budget issues, but to cut service like this is just devastating to the community. Every day, there's essential needs from so many people, for schools, hospitals, I mean, we can go on and on. But the end of the day, we know what it provides. And I'm just here to advocate for you and tell you that you're not alone on this journey, and myself and the members and so many advocates are here for you to get the message across, to contact the representatives, the senators, the governor, the mayors. So I just want to let you know that you're not here alone, and we're doing everything we can to get the service going and get the funding. Thank you.
But I just want to point out that with cutting weekend and holiday, particularly weekend, service, a lot of people who do work during the week will not be able to shop. That will affect businesses. Businesses then won't be able to collect taxes. Some people will not be able to work, because if they have to go to work on Fridays, Saturdays, or Sundays, the state will lose their taxes, the taxes from the businesses, et cetera. And I think that's an important thing for the politicians to consider as well.
Hi, I'm Dash. I'm from Warwick, originally from Cranston, left for a long time, went to Philadelphia, Germany, some other places, got MBA, came back, been here for five years, had this guy. I know everyone's talked about a lot of things related to how it's going to affect them, and I think those are super valid and really important. I do just want to talk about, though, thinking about like Providence as a city, especially comparatively when we look at Worcester and just, you know, related to Boston. And I know we want to be a city that's like an important city in the region. And when we have places like Brown and RISD and other colleges, PC, it feels good. But when we're not going to be able to probably keep some of those students that are going to be staying around, and I'm in my late 30s at this point, I'm just like watching everything happen. Having the bus service here is so important for that, because when you get out of school, you may not have a car. You might not, you might be living in the city and feel like you don't need a car. So like, we don't want those people to go to Worcester, which is coming up. They stole the paw socks from us, come on. Like, we need to put something together. And just having the basic functions of a city, a bus system, are so important. Before we even start thinking about what are we going to do to keep putting Providence on the map? Years ago, some very innovative people put together a whole new downtown for Providence, and it's still been really great. What are we going to do next? We can't even think about that until we keep our bus system in line to make sure people can actually go places. Because if we start getting rid of basic functions like a bus system, people are just going to leave. We're going to have people just leave, because that's something that feels like something that should just be in a city. So I just want to thank everyone for being here. I know you specifically, of course, you know, are not the people to decide this, but I know you're going to bring the comments to everyone, so I just want to thank everyone for being here and giving me the time. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Louis Bouchard. I live in South Kingstown currently. I have a car, yes, but it is more convenient on certain days, one of my long days. I have class here at C.C.R.I. I'm a full-time student. It's currently more readily available for me to take a bus rather than to drive up here every single day, because it's 30 to 40 minutes for me to get up here. And if you were to reduce the 66, that would be cutting how many days I could plan to be up here, because that would be reducing everything, and I would have to take some of my classes online. And then also, if you cut the 69 completely, I know that not only myself, but a lot of my coworkers, I work at Chars currently, right over in Wakefield. Currently, I know of at least six or seven of my coworkers that do take public transport to get to work. So whether that would be the Flex buses or 69, that would not be feasible for them to, for you guys to be able to cut those routes, because of the fact that a lot of those people rely on the bus systems to get them to work and to get them home. Some of them already have to leave work early to be able to catch the 69 bus, because I'm aware that it doesn't run that often. But right now, a lot of them already have to leave work early, let alone if they can't even catch the bus, they can't even come to work, and they would have to find another place of employment, which right now, not a lot of places around me are hiring, especially older people that may be close to retirement age. And I know a lot of the folks that I work with are closer to retirement age. So I just wanted to take this into consideration, because last year, I was fighting this mess when you guys were trying to do the original budget cuts. And this year, it's just gotten worse than it was last year. So I just wanted to thank you, thank you for your time and to take that into consideration.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Thomas Kewd. I'm from Pawtucket, and I'm a former Ripta bus operator. I've just retired after 45 years of service. I'm here in support of the riders and my brothers and sisters over at ATU 618 and all Ripta employees. I guess the best way I could describe this situation is it's chaotic, it's sad, and most importantly, it's going to injure a lot of people. It's not the fault of Ripta managers. It is the fault of a failure of government, government to recognize the value of mass transit. The service area for which Ripta does is statewide. With these contractions of service, it would become more or less a metro system. And folks have said publicly that maybe it's rightsizing Ripta. But when you're rightsized, you leave people by the side of the road, whether they're disabled or going to work. There's folks here going to not be able to have access to public transit, which means they won't have access to jobs, they won't have access to medical care, they won't have access to education, they won't have access to recreation. It's sad, and it needs to be addressed, and hopefully, with time, I would suggest a pause in this, if possible, to allow the state leaders to come together and find a solution to close this $15 million gap. And I commend the CEO for finding some more efficiencies in the fuel and pension contributions that the market's been good. He's identified some more monies that can be saved. But there is nothing left to cut at Ripta. Let's just be clear, this agency is not bloated. It's run as efficient as possible. And compared to other transit operations, the same size, similar size, Ripta punches above its weight with both the service hours, passengers per mile, and coverage of mileage over the state that we go and serve. I know that there's another piece about this that's most importantly. It's the governor signed recently into legislation a green bill about environmental greenhouse gases. And Ripta takes cars off the road. And if we have this cutback, there could be as much as 11.5 million more trips by vehicle. And that will raise the carbon footprint, which is already, our ecological imbalances going on in the world will be fed even worse. So I'd just like to say thank you to everybody that came out here today. I had the pleasure of chauffing you around for 45 years, and I feel your pain, and I certainly don't want to see my brothers and sisters lose their jobs, and I don't want to see you folks straining by the road. So the suggestion was to call your legislature, state senator, representative, many of them are on board with Ripta, they helped close the gap. I think the final calls have to be made to the governor. So please call Governor McKee and urge him to find a solution, working with the managers of Ripta. We had a labor shortage over there, and when CEO Mr. Duran took over, he worked immediately to close that, to hire onboard 44 more drivers. We were missing hundreds of trips a day. Now that's disappeared. And I believe there was a slide up there, but possibility of returning to some of those missed trips due to labor shortage. But the labor shortage is being imposed on Ripta, because they didn't fund it correctly. The government didn't fund it correctly. So it's my hope that something positive will come out of this negative. But I think by the fact that you folks showed up here today and raised your voice in unison to say that Ripta is valuable to the state of Rhode Island, for the economy, for the ecology, and most of all, for quality of life. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name's Eli Pereira, and I'm from Cranston, Rhode Island. And I'm actually speaking on behalf of Work Opportunities Unlimited, as I am an employment coach for individuals with developmental disabilities across the state. Many of my clients, Ripta is not just transportation, it's a means of independence. The proposed service cuts are not just inconvenient, they are life-altering for many of my clients. Many of them do not drive. Even a small change in their schedule for their ride or Ripta buses could mean that they are forced to leave their jobs, miss essential appointments, or become isolated from their communities. This Ripta is not a luxury, it is basic access and a basic need. I respectfully ask Ripta to reconsider these sweeping reductions and instead prioritize solutions that would protect access to our state's most vulnerable. Cutting transit for the sake of closing a budget gap may look good on paper, but in practice, it punishes those who are already face of the highest barriers in our society. Ripta's service is not elective, it is essential infrastructure for disability justice, economic inclusion, and human dignity. If these cuts go forward as proposed, I fear we will see a rise in job loss, housing instability, declining health outcomes among the very populations we should be protecting. Do not balance this budget on the backs of the most vulnerable Rhode Islanders. Thank you.
My previous comments, I did say that it was a statewide issue, and as you can see, it is. I do agree with this gentleman's idea with the universities and colleges. I also want to mark one faction of people that was not brought up here, and that's the homeless. The homeless get around on Ripta, and they get around, you know, you've got people from Amos House, you've got people from ACOs, you've got people from Crossroads, DV shelters, everywhere. And, you know, if you've got services, where are they going to go? But also hearing out here that it's not solely, you know, on you guys, it's, you know, the Sheldon White Houses, the Governor McKees, the Lieutenant Governors, and everything. So yeah, I think that you guys should raise a stink and be like, let's invite people there, too. But I have another kind of odd solution. Would it be fair to ask if Ripta could work with the MBCR, the MBTA, GATRA, and any other of the, like, the Connecticut services? Maybe since this is a southern New England issue, you know, we could have people, we could not only get help for Ripta, we have people on Ripta who want to go to, say, Fall River, or Mystic, or Thompson, Connecticut, you know, for jobs. This could open up job possibilities and everything, you know, if you communicate with those transportation authorities, too, you know? Say if Ripta and the MBCR, MBTA had a deal of some sort, that would help people go on the commuter rails all the way from Wickford Junction all the way up to Boston, and you would have everything on time and cohesive, you know? And this is, this is just a random thought, but, you know, that would help out a lot, too. I'm just saying, if there's cooperation from not just Rhode Island, maybe Massachusetts and Connecticut can get in on this and maybe help those people out in Burraville, or Westerly, or Little Compton, or Tivity, you know, where you guys can't hit, and they can hit a transfer station. Say if you had a station up in Burraville, they could get routes to that part of southern Mass, or that part of Connecticut. And then they hit the Ripta hub, and they could transfer to Providence, you know? The possibilities open up at that point. So, you know, right now, it does look bleak, and again, you know, I worry, because I know after here, you guys got to go to other cities and stuff, and I don't envy the position you guys are in and that firestorm to come. I hope it comes out positive like this does, but, you know, I wish you guys the best, and thank you for letting everybody speak.
I started taking Ripta to get out of the house and start going out places. If you guys eliminate 23, how am I going to go places to get stuff done? How am I going to get here without walking over two miles from my house with sidewalks that are not shoveled in the winter? Because I can't go on the Flex. I'm right outside the Flex line. What am I supposed to do? Uber is $15 each way. If I'm working four hours, I'm basically working for Uber. They go with my whole paycheck. What am I supposed to do? You know? Thank you.